It's seven o'clock, so we'll get the meeting started. This is a regular meeting of the Westmoreland City Council for February 20th, 2020. We can't go wrong tonight when you can go both ways, forward and backwards with the date and if you come out, so we welcome everyone here tonight. We're certainly happy to have you join us on this cool February evening, and we'll ask the pastor to come for our devotion now.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Great to be here tonight. I tell you, you're the best looking crowd I've been in front of all day today. So, little yard right there, but you really are.
Your crowds today.
Let's pray and ask God to bless our meeting tonight. Father God, we just come to you tonight, Lord, just first of all thanking you and praising you, Lord God, for all that you're doing, Lord God, in our town. God, I pray that you would just bless us tonight, God, as we have this meeting tonight, Lord God, that you would be right in the midst of this meeting. God, I pray that you would just be with our council, Lord God, our mayor, our vice mayor, Lord God, that they would make the best decisions for us, Lord God, as a town. And God, I pray that you would just be with us tonight, God, that your hand would guide in every way. God, we love you and we glorify you. God, we declare greatness in 2020 for our town, God. God, we proclaim, God, that there will be greatness, Lord God, that this would be the greatest year that this town has ever seen, Lord God. I pray that you would just touch us, Lord God, bless us, Lord God, that your spirit, God, would just hover over our town. And God, I pray, Lord God, for you, Lord God, to have your way tonight, God. God, we love you, God, we praise you, and God, as in always, we glorify you in all that we do. And God, it's in your precious holy name, Jesus, that we pray all of these things. Amen.
Amen.
If you please stand, we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. We have a quorum, so we can proceed with the meeting. The next item is to adopt an agenda, and we have some items that do need to be added to it, one being we have some garbage truck repairs that need to be added. We have the budget amendment ordinance. I don't think I overlooked that in print, did I? And then we have charter changes for an ordinance. Want to look at some logos? And what else am I missing? I want the interim chief.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the additions that the mayor just mentioned.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Leif, to adopt the agenda with the additions to it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the public comments portion. Ms. Catherine McKay. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
I'm not telling you where I live. I'm joking. Catherine McKay, 4455 Old Highway 52.
Okay, go ahead.
On the agenda tonight is the position for codes and animal control. And that position has been temporary. I was never really... I didn't really understand if that was a position that had been filled or it was just an interim position until that it went up, until it went up for a bit, because I never saw it posted anywhere. And I was just wondering when this, when it was going to be posted and the qualifications and so on and so forth, and if it was something I had missed. That I wasn't really sure of. But in the fact that we, the person that we have that is now in that position, I don't know her. I've never met her, never dealt with her. But I do know that although a misdemeanor is not a disqualification, this misdemeanor that she did have was when she had authority working for the city, representing the city, having lethal force, deadly force, not only one way, in the fact that she carried a weapon, but in the fact that she had a canine. And as we know, a canine can be just as deadly. She had other tools at her disposal. She had a radio. She had a backup officer. It was a traffic stop. There was another human being in the car. And the fact that this person, when he did run, I don't care if he was a scum of the earth, the fact is that he ran. The man was not known for good judgment, or he wouldn't have had a whole bunch of warrants out for him to begin with. So, you know that as a police officer, these things are going to happen. The fact that she had to go after him, that he complied, that he was down on the ground, that he was fully cuffed and defenseless, is when the misdemeanor took place with intent. The intent being that she was, she had already been screaming and yelling at him, like I said, and she threatened him with bodily harm from her dog. There was another officer there. He was subdued. He was compliant. He complied. She turned around. There is no snap decision here. There was no threat of danger. There was no instant where she was in danger after he complied. And with intent, she, the situation escalated. She lost verbal control, and her anger escalated beyond. And then she turned with intent. This is the time that she had to make a decision. She turned and told the other officer, turn off the camera. That is intent to do something that wasn't right. We trust our officers every day to protect us, to protect our children, our community. We hired them for that, no matter what pay. They contract for the job, they take an oath, and they're to do their duty. They are not to be the punisher, the executioner, or the judge. And for her to do this put the city in a precarious, the precarious position of liability. Okay? Now, now, she has been in another position of authority, where she has authority over the citizens in Westmoreland, in the capacity of controlling their animals, and she's going to have to make contact.
One moment.
We've already seen that she makes, she made a bad decision. We already know that she has a temper. So what's going to happen? Are we going to be able to trust this woman to make the right decision? Because we trusted her once. And here we are. If she doesn't like you, if she has a bias, or whatever, she's, the whole system is tainted now. Any action she has, she does now is tainted. Any citations, whatever. The city does not need that liability. She's putting us at risk again. I say yes, forgive. That does not mean that I'm going to trust you. You earn trust. And already, there are a lot of citizens that just say, oh, no, no, I'm not going to have contact with this woman, and if I do, I'm going straight to the police station, and that's where she can have contact with me. Right? And that's all I want to say on this subject. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the minutes from the January 16th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion to approve minutes from the January 16th, 2020 meeting as written.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Carter, second by Councilwoman Wilkerson, to accept the minutes as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the financial statement from January 2020.
I move with the financial statement for January 20.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Biddle, second by Councilman Brown, to accept the January 2020 financial statement. We're open for discussion. One of the line items that I'll point to your attention on is the state street aid. That's part of what we're going to be voting on a little bit later with the budget amendment. We're getting to the time in the year when money is starting to tighten up a little bit, so our department heads are aware of that, and they are going to be tightening their belts a little bit, so. There's anyone, anything, anyone else wants to say? Okay. A few more minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to old business now. The first item up is the chamber meeting room of where the, we discussed in the work study, an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce to use the front area of this room. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Biddle and a second by Councilwoman Carter. We're open for discussion.
Did we ever come to any agreement, written agreement, between the council and the chamber?
We just have the one that you brought to the work study meeting, and the only thing that I really saw that I felt was in addition to it, and I haven't heard anything from our city attorney about it, but where it said the parking facilities will be provided for the chamber is basically the parking lot is public parking lot, so the chamber will have the opportunity to park like everyone else does. I don't know that we can actually designate a parking in a public parking lot, can we, John?
I suggest that you approve this agreement subject to my approval and comments. I'll make some changes to it, because I'm not ready to say it, and get the mayor to approve it. If y'all trust me to do that, we'll do that.
And the chamber also is under the understanding that the public restroom is there, so we have to allow passage for that, so. But everything else looks good to me in agreement, so if that's okay as an amendment to your motion.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Fine with me, I'll say.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Amanda Wolf positioning pay. This was on the agenda last month, and it got deferred. We'll pick it back up.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we keep Ms. Amanda Wolf on the job as animal control and property maintenance job. Per the job description that was in your packet, and we actually had adopted that back in January, in addition, her pay will be reduced to $14 an hour. I have more to say about that, but that's just to get the motion on the table.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Biddle, a second by Councilwoman Carter, to move Amanda Wolf into the animal control and codes and administrative position per the job description at a rate of $14 per hour. We're open for discussion.
One thing we know is that Ms. Wolf had her day in court. She pled guilty. She was stripped of her post certification and can no longer at this time wear the badge. All of these circumstances were beyond our control. However, I would like for each of us to consider the following. Because we must put the best interest of the city first, our vision for an animal control and codes enforcement officer should require an individual who is a certified police officer, one who can meet the needs of both animal control and codes enforcement, and be able to supplement the police force for any other duty necessary. By having a full-time officer to meet both the needs of animal control and codes enforcement and perform other duties such as patrolling, et cetera, we maximize efficiency and we consolidate roles. So it'd be my recommendation that we seek a certified individual to fulfill the needs best for the city of Westmoreland. Despite what the actions occurred prior to this, looking forward, I want everyone to consider this. This has been the most difficult vote I've had to consider while being on the council. I'm going to vote what I believe is in the best interest of the city and Ms. Wolf. We all make mistakes and bad decisions in the heat of the moment. Some people get more attention than others when they mess up, particularly if you're in the public eye, if you're a councilman, a coach, a teacher, or in this case, a police officer. Give you an example in the Bible, a woman was brought to Jesus who was caught in the act of sinning to get Jesus' opinion. Should she be stoned to death? Jesus said to the self-righteous group that had brought her there, whoever is without sin, let him cast the first stone. And then he looked down, gave it a little time. When he raised up his head, only the woman was standing there. The accusers were gone. He told the woman to go and sin no more. I believe she learned her lesson. She was shown mercy and given a second chance. Ms. Wolf did wrong, but she deserves a second chance like the woman in the Bible. I'm going to vote to keep her on the job as I've already made the motion that we referred to there. The police don't have time to do this, because there are always more pressing issues taking priority over taking care of dogs and cats and property maintenance. Property maintenance is very time consuming, doing the inspections and doing all the correspondence with the property owners, sometimes the state, sometimes attorneys. The law requires all that. The police chief and city hall staff need help, clerical help at times. Ms. Wolf can fill in both those places with coordination between the chief and the recorder. We're not creating a job just for her, as I said. We had an employee that did that previously, and he's no longer with us. I'm not perfect, and I'm not going to cast a stone. She's been to annual management training, and her salary is going to be reduced. The chief said she's done a great job before and after this one incident. She's a good worker and recently joined with the chief in public works in cleaning up a house that was in deplorable conditions, and it was raining and cold that day. So she's not afraid of work. I encourage my fellow council members to join me in voting to keep Ms. Wolf employed by the city.
Any discussion?
I just have one on the job description. There was nothing in the job description on codes for property maintenance, even though it states it up in the title, it, none of the description duties was specified, so we would have, if this passed, we would have to re, or we need to revisit this position, I mean, these duties anyway. If, I mean, we can get started with this, but then we can add to it, the job description, whomever is in that position.
Point will, second.
It discussed the animal control and administrative part, but in the bullet points, there was nothing on maintenance property, property maintenance.
Where would her salary come out of, if, or where would this positions, whichever way we go, where would that salary line come from?
Sorry, Bush did it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be where his previous was. Okay.
I believe in giving second chances also. I'm like Tony, I've struggled with this. I've wrestled with this. This has been on my mind. I've lost sleep over it. My family has suffered over it because of moods I've been in, but, and I got to thank it. Then, I guess what really hit me to make my mind up was the disturbing news that Chief Ray resigned. So that put more pressure on us to find more warm bodies to fill these positions that we've got to fill. And Amanda is doing a good job in the, in the codes, getting things cleaned up that had been left unattended to for years around here, and she's making headway. And she has been stripped of all of her police power. She's been decertified. She's not a police officer. She did make a bad mistake in the heat of the moment. I've been given second chances myself in life, and I'm not going to cast the first stone here. I do think that we need to put her in another office somewhere, maybe over at city hall upstairs, and just have her distance away from the police department as much as possible where she can do her job. I really think she'll, I think she'll do, do a good job in this position.
I want to echo what I've heard all of you say. I have wrestled. Oh, I have wrestled, and I have asked, and I have asked, prayed, I have asked advice from many. And I will just state that my vote is what I feel is best for us at this time. That's all I say, where I sit.
If we could add this for you to, would this make everybody happy, and to perform property maintenance enforcement as needed, or you want more? Would that suffice?
Just so we have something in the job description.
Okay. Can I get agreement to go ahead?
I make a motion to amend that.
I make a motion to amend, to amend it to those words, to perform property maintenance enforcement as needed. Here, your mayor, do you want that?
Last thing I might also add, I may have said it, but I don't think I did. We'll never, I don't think, find anybody that will take that position at $14 an hour. It'll be difficult to find somebody, and while we're looking, things will start to get, even get more out of hand than what they already are. I believe.
With that, I'll call for the hook, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Biddle?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Vote is three to two. Motion carries that Amanda Wolf will be put in the position of the animal control administration and property maintenance. Moving to new business now, first item is to hire Justin Berdoff as a full-time police officer.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Justin Berdoff. He is a certified officer. He has put himself through Walter State Community College. He is certified. He's a graduate of the Red Bull Springs High School. He's a native of Macon County. He is working with the Red Bull Springs Police Department as an officer, and he wishes to come to the Westmoreland Police Department. We've done his background check. He has a good background. He was a good student in school, very good ball player, a good officer, a good student in the academy, and we feel like that he would make the city of Westmoreland a good officer.
I make a motion to hire Justin Berdoff, is that right? A full-time police officer for Westmoreland Police Department.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilman Leif, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson, to hire Justin Berdoff as a full-time police officer. Chief, he is aware of the pay scale.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a nice benefits package, so hopefully we will get to improve it in the future.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I will say this, I've had several phone calls from people up in that area, give them nothing but outstanding high marks.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the city of Westmoreland. Next item is just a housekeeping move that some, some funding got moved from a land to the, in the general fund to the reserve fund, and we want to put that back. It will go into playgrounds. It's to move $2,056.77 that was raised by citizens to help in the playground project.
So move that.
I second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Leif, a second by Councilwoman Carter, to move these loans back to the general fund line item for playgrounds. Other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the resolution R022020-1 to update the building codes. We had this on the agenda earlier, and it took some, some more discussion as to try to get it right. We, I'm still not sure, but everything's 100% on it, but we tried, because the county is doing our inspections, our other, the 2012 code that we used has expired, so we had to move up at least to 2015. So we had to move up at least to 2015, and that's what the county inspects through now. So I tried to mirror everything that the county had. Mr. Mills looked at it, and he made some changes, and then we directed it to Mr. Wright, and he's made some changes, and this copy that you have in front of you is, is the latest one that we have right now. One question that I have is I'm not sure that we have our three occupancies, so that might be removed and just put home daycare. And I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 022020-1.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Leaf. We're open for other discussion on this matter. This will get us through at least three more years before we have to adopt something else. And obviously, the, the international building code and the international residential code will be, be changing. And the fire department will be working with the international fire codes as they, they come around as the state updates things with that. If I could not get this passed through, then I was basically going to say, we'll wait for the, the state to come and, and, you know, help us out on what to write, because obviously, I'm not a codes person, and that's why we took Mr. Mills and Mr. Wright to assist on it. But it didn't make sense to me that if they're inspecting to 2015, that should be our standard. And you might also notice that at the end of it, it says the property maintenance code is omitted and will be enforced by the city of Westmoreland. We will still have to probably write some updates for property maintenance. That is gonna be somewhat complex, because we've got to find out exactly what is allowed for municipalities to do in this area. So you have just put a person in a position to handle property maintenance, so we need to probably update all of our, our rules and regulations for that. We have some, we've had an incident that, that come up this week on a Monday, and I'm not sure that we had all the regulations that we needed to enforce it, but it was enforced of the regulations that we now have on, on books.
I will say that normally the, and you spoke on the fire codes, it goes along with the same year as the building code. So I think our fire chief will be coming forth with an update on the fire codes as well.
Any other discussion? If you'll call for a roll, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record show, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is resolution R-022020-2, the Safer Grant application resolution.
I move we adopt resolution R-022020-2, FEMA Safer Grant.
I second that motion.
Of a motion by Councilman Biddle, a second by Councilwoman Carter, to accept resolution and pass R-022020-2, resolution in support of the Westmoreland Fire Department for the FEMA Safer Grant application. Any discussion?
You remind us what the, what's the possibility of, of the dollar amount for this grant?
It would be salary and benefits. He's got two staff members here for the two, so whatever that calculates in then. Do we know when this grant is opened up?
It hasn't opened for this year yet.
Okay, so we're just getting preparations to when it does, that we can go forward?
Yeah.
Because I know it's kinda like on a first come, first served basis, isn't it?
Tisha, if you'll call for a roll, please.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Record reflects that motion carries unanimously. Next item is resolution R-022020-3, dedicate Pleasant Grove Road, and the resolution is naming it as a dedication, a portion of Pleasant Grove Road to Sergeant Wayne Stewart.
I make a motion to pass resolution O-22020-3, dedicating a portion of Pleasant Grove Road, I think from Austin P. down to Epperson Springs, as Sergeant Wayne Stewart Highway Road.
Memorial Road.
Memorial Road.
I second.
Of a motion by Councilwoman Carter, and a second by Councilwoman Wilkinson, to pass resolution 022020-3. Discussion.
I knew Mr. Sergeant Stewart over the whole twenty years, and I'm glad the police department recommended this. He was a man of integrity. It didn't matter what position he had, he was the same every time you talked to him. And we're lucky that he served the city of Westmoreland.
Yeah. I think it's a fine honor that we, we get a chance to dedicate something like this to members of our community, or who were members of the, of the community who are still in our memory. I got a chance to know Sergeant Stewart and, and his family, and he was a fine man.
I'm gonna take this opportunity to actually read this resolution. Says whereas the city of Westmoreland approved the dedication of streets for the city, and whereas Wayne Stewart served the city of Westmoreland Police Department for twenty years, Wayne held the titles of sergeant, assistant chief, and chief during his service to the city. And whereas the city of Westmoreland would like to provide a memorial to Wayne Stewart by dedicating this section of Pleasant Grove Road from Austin P. Highway to Epperson Springs Road to Sergeant Wayne Stewart Memorial Road. Now hereby be it resolved by the council of the city of Westmoreland that this resolution will be effective at the time the resolution is read, approved, and adopted in open regular session this the twentieth day of February 2020. And I might add, I had the opportunity for over forty years ago to work with Wayne when he was at the Gaunt in the police department, and he has served many, many departments in this county and this area, and I was very honored to call him friend.
Brown?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Tisha, if you'll attest that, then you can, we'll, we'll try to get someone some letter paper, but I have something to take home with me tonight.
Will there be a little dedication ceremony at the time the sign is erected?
Yes, of course, it's a sign, and get that taken care of, so.
Ms. Doris, would you like to say anything?
I'm gonna say thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight. I'm proud to say this motion has carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is Michael Kandler.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've emailed, did everybody get my email? I emailed you all a report, and when I spoke to Michael about the outcome of his results, he wished for the council to make his decision. Pretty all, pretty much that I'll say right now.
I make a motion to accept, to terminate Michael Kandler as a police officer based on our evaluation confirmation.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilwoman Carter, a second by Councilman Brown for Michael Kandler termination. No discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next two items I, I am going to combine. One is to pay for Shane Tuttle to take the CDL class, and to pay for Charles Bryley to take the CDL class to obtain CDL certificates so they can drive trucks. Shane has already been approved for the one dollar an hour raise for the position once he obtains those credentials. But Charles will, Charles Bryley will have to have that included in, in this motion that he would get the one dollar an hour raise upon completion and receiving his certificate.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to pay for Shane Tuttle and Charles Bryley to take the CDL class, and upon completion of the class, that Charles Bryley will receive a one dollar an hour raise.
I'll second that.
Of a motion by Councilman Leaf, a second by Councilman Biddle. To accept this motion has been discussed. Do we have any other discussion on it? When, you, you'll be in charge of making the arrangements for them to attend. I know you said it for work study, but the instructor says they could get, get them a week at a time. I don't think it would be wise at this point to send out two men at one time, so it'll be up to you to work out the details if it's, if it's forthcoming with it.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is to award quotes for three-phase power at Ridge Chris Grinder Station. And I think Aaron has some quotes on that, so if I get a motion in a second, we'll.
We haven't seen the quotes.
Well, I think he's, he's got them here, he's gonna talk, talk to us about it.
I've got two quotes.
They're sealed, so.
Any motion first?
If, if you wanna go ahead and present them, that's okay.
Motion, open, open the quotes if what you want.
We can approve a quote unless we see it.
Well, just, just to move forward with it at this point.
I, I move that we award a quote.
Second.
Whatever we need to do.
Now, I had contacted six different electricians and people that we've used in the past. I had four people come out and look at it, and then I haven't had but the two quotes turned in. So just to give you all an idea of why I only have two.
Don't these need to be read by Aaron to make sure they're apples to apples?
Well, whenever I took them up there, I showed them everything exactly how I wanted it. I mean, I hadn't seen the quotes, but when I talked, spoke with each person individually, I had a list of, of how I wanted it set up, and they all looked at everything and said that that's how they would quote it. And they actually, I actually gave everybody a copy of that when they took it to, to do the quotes.
I'm just gonna ask that the council make the motion to give me the authority to, to let Aaron investigate things, and upon his investigation and, and making sure that everything is apples to apples, that I can pick it, because it's over my signing, and when it's reasoned, I wouldn't okay any of it beforehand.
I still move. I second.
We already had a motion on the floor.
Well, well, whenever you come, you're ready. Scratch that, Tisha.
Scratch mine.
Okay, so I guess the motion would be to review the quotes and, and then authorize the mayor to award them upon video.
Just let Shandra add what Tony said to her, to her motion, and that way we're staying within the legal, the guidelines there.
And you made the second.
I made the second.
That's what Tony did.
Tony made second.
Okay, so. So Councilwoman Wilkinson made the motion, and the second by Councilman Biddle, to review these quotes and return them over to our public works director and on his recommendation, I'll award, I'll award the, the outcome.
Next time you could set like a bid, a quote opening like this afternoon, and you and the mayor could have went over those.
May.
And, and then.
Yeah, I wasn't sure this worked.
Right, right, right.
I got you, okay.
It could be done ahead of time, that way you will know, we don't know. I mean, I don't know, but others may, but I don't know.
And I had a question, I mean, I know these are the only two that I received, but since Jerry and I are gonna kinda go over them at a later date, if something gets turned in, say tomorrow, before we go over them, and it is a better bid, and it's still the same, everything the same, I mean, is that still okay, or does it have to be one of these two? I'm just a question, and I don't know, because I haven't been through all this yet.
Did you set a deadline for submitting those?
I told them that I needed them by today, but I, I mean, I guess, yeah, that would be mine.
You normally would set a deadline of submitting the, the seal folks.
Mr. Brennan might be able to elaborate on it, but I would say. Mr. Brennan might be able to elaborate on it, but I would say that no more bids after these two here. It's been opened because it might like some.
Yeah, you'd have to start a whole process.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that, I just wanted to ask.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is kind of the same situation, purchase a new sewer plant for the lift station.
You better re-read that.
We don't need nothing.
Just a pump.
Seems like we just bought one.
We did.
Purchase a new vacuum pump for, which lift station is, Mr. President? This doesn't say.
Davis Branch Station Number Two.
Number Two.
Which we have replaced the pump already, so I'm not down a pump right now. But what we've been doing in the past is keeping spare. This is actually for the spare to have on hand in case one goes down. Because Station One and Station Two, if they lose a pump, it's, it can be really bad, especially if we have a storm or something.
And it's, how many thousand?
Seven, seven thousand and something. I don't have it on me right now, but it's seven to eight thousand. And they gotta be shipped from Germany over here. So that's the, yeah.
Does that, that doesn't include installation either, does it?
No, what we'll do is we'll put it together. And there's only two pumps that we can't install ourselves. And we usually call L and T to come because they got a boom truck they can reach in there. But the other eight, we can install ourselves. And that's how we've done it in the past, is we just install them ourselves, unless it's the two that's in the back at one and two, and they have to use the boom truck to do that with. There's not any wiring or anything, it's just, we have an electric motor and then we have a pump, and they're married together with a rubber cog, and that's how they run. So we don't have to do any electrical or anything like that. So all we do is unbolt the old pump from the electric motor and then get it out of the way and then bolt them and go on.
Next up, next thing we've got to figure out is exactly where in the budget that will come from. Because line number nine forty-seven is already in the budget.
You've got line two sixty-five repairing maintenance to the lines for material. I mean, that wouldn't be the lines, but it's tied into the lines. But we have enough money there to take it out of materials. Which I know there's going to be other.
Now, this is for the sewer, right?
It's for the sewer, right, yeah.
Line two sixty-five.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, there's no motion yet.
I make a motion to purchase the new vacuum pump for the price of seven to eight thousand dollars and take it out of the budget under the Sewer Department, line item two sixty-five.
Second motion.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Carter, second by Councilman Leaf to purchase the vacuum pump for sewer station, lift station number two with the funding coming out of line two sixty-five.
I mean, this is not a choice, we have to have a new pump, correct?
Well, I mean, as of right now, we're good, but anytime.
We gotta have a backup pump at all times.
Yeah, in my opinion, that's rolling the dice.
How many months are we looking at getting one here from Germany?
It's probably at least a month, I would say. They're fairly quickly, they get them over fairly quickly, so I would say at least a month.
I think sometime in the future, whoever gets able, they'd probably have two of them on hand if they were down.
Yeah, we see.
We've made a lot of progress, we just don't have any.
We had had one, and it probably sit there for six or eight months. And then just a few months ago, we had three go out just right after another. So that's, that's kind of what's absorbed all that. Because last year didn't seem like we really didn't have a lot of them go out. But then they, you know, seems like when they go out, they all went out at the same time this time.
So do you have a plan in place that if this one does go out before you get the other one installed? Since we're talking about a timeframe here of a month or more?
Yes, what I actually do, and what we had already, y'all had already approved the purchase of the last pump to install in Station Three, which is on Pump and Station Road. It can run on two pumps, and it has ran on two pumps for the past five or six years. We installed, installed the third pump on it. So now it has, it has the three pumps on it. So if, worst case scenario, if Station One or Two loses a pump and we have to have one emergency, I can pull one of those and bring it up here.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the donation to seniors. I put that on there to ask the council for a donation to the seniors. Ms. Jackie came from their Board of Directors, and she is asking us for a one thousand dollar runtime donation to help them get established in their new building. She's going to the county and she's going to be asking them for about seventy-five hundred. So with, if all that passes and hopefully they go, they're getting settled in, it's just a lot of things to do, but the community is coming together. And I just asked for a motion and some discussion on it.
I'll make a motion to make the thousand dollar donation.
Second motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Leaf, Bento, and a second by Councilman Leaf for a one thousand dollar donation to Westmoreland senior citizens for use at their new building, open for discussion.
That will need to be a budget amendment by the time we do the second reading on the amendment, correct?
Correct. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item I put on there, we received this windfall of money that came in from haul income tax. The donation to the playground for a teeter totter. That was put in the budget and then it got taken out before a second reading to help balance it up. That is part of the money that was moved earlier tonight, the two thousand dollars that citizens raised. The cost of this has actually come down. The quote that I've received from the state contract bid this morning is about sixty-eight hundred dollars. So it was over, over seven thousand. It's, it's a lot for a piece of playground equipment that meets ADA standards, but it does meet all the modern standards, and that includes everything with it. I would ask that the council add enough funding with that, which would be roughly five thousand dollars to cover that, and we could put that back into Thomas Carter Park. The alternative to that, if we don't, is wait to look at it in the next budget and do like we did with the last piece of equipment. Once our insurance company tells us we've got to remove it, it will have to be taken out at that point. The one that is there, it's been rehabbed and redone, and it, you know, you might squeeze a little longer out of it, but this is probably the best chance of a time for getting a new piece of equipment for our kids and our children to play on.
Have we looked at my, like, four seats, is it a two, how much more?
It jumps up to about ten.
Ten thousand. So does that include everything around it?
Mm-hmm, it's eight inches of fuel, the bumper guard, the ADA handicap accessible ramp to it, and.
Do we know the square foot of that, of space?
It's on, it's on the.
We have said it.
Can't remember if it's ten, the ten or twelve, the twelve.
Dimensions are twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one out to the handicap ramp, about twenty-four.
Okay. I didn't read up, did they install it? I didn't read all the fine print.
If I read all, that does include installation.
Three hundred eighty-three square feet. Install, five star.
And being sold, it has a three-year warranty with it.
And where you think the money's going to come from, what's your?
It'd have to come from that haul income tax.
So when you say donation, you're, we're talking about.
Yeah, putting it in the Parks and Recreation Fund. Which, which has money in the Parks and Recreation Fund, but most of that's for repair to parks. Like that's sixty-four hundred dollars that we just spent over there.
So you said you were asking for five thousand to go along with the two thousand fifty-six from the.
That citizens have already raised.
Raised.
What line item is that again?
It'd be eight oh eight. Elsewhere, so if it's, yes, it's repairs, if we get into the season, we'll need other things, so.
How much do the citizens donate?
Two thousand fifty-six.
Two thousand fifty-six.
Originally, they donated, I believe it was twelve thousand. And the city matched ten thousand of it to put in the one piece of playground equipment that we have. Then this one, we had money in the last year to meet it for five thousand, but when we got the quotes, the quote was over seven thousand, so we didn't have enough money to get it. And it got pulled out of the budget, so. So I figured that if we weren't going to get it, you know, now is the best chance of opportunity to ask for it.
I make a motion that we donate to the playground for the teeter totter by moving it into, correct me if I'm wrong, by moving it into eight oh eight Playground Equipment.
How much?
Well, yeah, five, excuse me, it'd be four, five thousand dollars.
Have a motion on the floor, or does it get a second?
A second.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilwoman Wilkinson to take five thousand dollars from the haul income tax line item and move it to line eight oh eight of Parks and Recreation. This will be supplemented by the two thousand dollars that citizens raised in order to buy this, it's actually called a book about. It's what we used to call the teeter totter when I was growing up for a seesaw.
Seesaw.
Seesaw, right there.
Any other discussion?
I think it'll be a great improvement down at the park. It, that, what's there is an eyesore, even though I hate paying that kind of money for, for playground equipment.
Like highway robbery.
But I think it'd be a big improvement to the park.
You're always welcome to amend the motion and buy two of them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item that we need to add, that was added on, was we need some repairs to our garbage truck, and both of those are fairly expensive. I asked Aaron, he got a surprise on all of it. It's over in the office, I failed to bring it over. But it's close to twenty thousand dollars that would cover all those repairs.
So we, well, I make a motion that we take care of the repairs to the garbage trucks.
Second.
So both of our trucks are sick.
Have they started on the repair, I'm sorry? Have they started on repairing them?
One of the trucks has been repaired, the other one we're holding off on. Actually, Aaron said that they called back and said that they found that one of the injectors was bad on one. And what they recommended, if one's going bad, generally another one will go bad. If, well, we had it in the shop, we wanted to go ahead and replace those, that could happen also. I think he said those were five hundred dollars a piece. Somebody here knows more about truck repair than I do, on injectors. We have a motion by Councilman Bento, second by Councilman Leaf to perform the repairs, and we'll need to look and see where we want that money to come from also in the budget. And uh, uh, we'll need to look and see where we want that money to come from also in the budget.
It'll have to come out of line item three thirty-two, which you can make it over budgeted, because it already is at eighty-nine dollars. But those repairs have gotten to be made.
Page, you, Frida?
Uh, seven.
Page seven. Well, one way we do our second reading of a budget amendment, we may need to look at pulling something out of fund balance to, to cover that.
What line item did you say Frida?
Um, three thirty-two.
You'd have to keep, come out that line, we'll just take, move some money to it.
Right. What, the nine forty, line item nine forty-five that says equipment, would that, can that be considered any?
That, that can be used for it also.
So we got seven, seven thousand.
That's what he was gonna get, the uh, flipper on the back, but uh, we, we need to keep the trucks running.
Yeah.
We can get it to run before we can flip it off.
Exactly.
And, and if our, um, like we discussed before, it's a work study. If this does not, if this department does not go over budget within its department, we may be okay. We have the money in the bank to cover it, one hundred and forty-two thousand estimate.
Important thing right now is to just know which line first come out of three thirty-two.
Well, and of course, I didn't see that nine forty-five, but the seven thousand out of nine forty-five and the remaining out of three thirty-two, right?
And then we'll still need some. No, we won't. He said it was gonna cost about twenty.
Take this amount and then to take the remaining of the total expense.
Okay.
Cause our, our budget within that department is, is doing okay. We had the ten, five, fifteen in the reserve. So uh, if we don't have any uh, more grade expense in that department, we'll be okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item you have before you uh, the uh, budget amendment ordinance number zero two, two zero two zero dash one. Uh, this will be first reading on this. And that uh, is the hall income tax that we've discussed so much and uh, is appropriating uh, that. So all entertain the motion.
I make a motion to pass ordinance zero two, two zero two zero dash one on first reading, uh, as presented.
Second motion.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Carter, second by Councilman Leaf to uh, accept budget, the budget amendment ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Keisha, would you like to speak on what MTS lady told you today?
I talked to uh, Emily Golling from MTS. She taught a class that I attended today and she helped me on how to do this. So we got the actual accounts, we just don't have the line item numbers for those. But she recommended this was the best way to do it.
And then we still need to add to it on our second, for our second reading.
Gotta have to be tweaked for the second reading, but uh, this uh, gets us back in the correct form for the Pop-Tarts office. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the charter changes. Uh, I believe our city attorney has uh, some things to uh, to present. And um, should we discuss that?
Yeah, I, I talked to Representative Lambert and he said some of the committees are beginning to shut down in the legislature. So he recommended that we basically fast pace it. Uh, I reviewed that, but he took what I had about ten pages and made it two or three pages, but he said the same thing. So uh, we've been over this previously, so it's, it's not anything new. He just captured what we had talked about. Do you have any more?
Yeah, this is, this is the very similar to what we considered um, three years ago. There was a lot of discussion about it and there was discourse whether or not, whether or what should have been done and actually it would have been nothing then. Let me just go through the section one, this is just housekeeping. He just, so many of these just could make the charter match what we're doing now. And some of it takes that language about what happened in nineteen sixty-eight or nineteen seventy-two, whatever, that's not, not relevant now. It does not need to be in our charter. So section one is just a meeting, is, is deleting a couple of sentences about certificates of election and installation of office. It's just housekeeping. The same thing with the next section about city council to appoint certain officers. The third thing is just housekeeping, also salary, salary of mayor and alderman. And um, then the next one, we had language about city council meeting, something about uh, deputy marshals or whatever. And we don't have any marshals here. And it just said for the police chief to either serve the notice of a special meeting or his designate, his or her designate. So it could be an officer or whoever they want to serve. Next one has to do with vacancies and un, un, unexpired terms. We talked about this at the last meeting. It makes it clear that if you're appointed, you only serve for the next municipal election, so long as it's at least twenty days before the filing for nominating petitions. So if someone were to die after one year on the council and an appointment was replaced, uh, with replacement appointment, that appointment would be good for a year and then the next election, they would be on the ballot that wanted to run for a two-year term to, to finish that term out. And the same thing is true with the mayor. We've got where the vice mayor is appointed after every municipal election, you elect a vice mayor, so they're elected for two-year terms. But it also has the language that if something were to happen to the mayor and the vice mayor becomes mayor, if it's in the, you know, if there's three years left in the term, the mayor, they have to run for mayor for the second half of the term. If it's already in the second half, it would just be to the next election. With the same language about twenty days before the nominating petitions could be filed. Uh, the next thing, uh, this, we, that, the, the old charter said that the recorder was to preside over the city court. And we've got now that the judge presides over the city court. Same thing as section eight has to do with that. This section nine was what we talked about the last meeting. We changed it from water and electric department to water and sewer department and made all those references also gender neutral in there. That's the only change that was made. Same thing about the next was housekeeping, talking about the uh, police chief reporting the money that's paid to him. We changed that to city clerks, because the police chief doesn't, doesn't receive revenue from city court. And this next one, this section eleven is something that the mayor mentioned at the last meeting about the duties of the city attorney. So I'm just gonna read that, because I think it captures what we're trying to do. The city attorney shall direct the management of all litigation with the city as a party, including the function of prosecuting the current year in the city court when it's necessary. The city attorney shall represent the city in all legal matters and proceedings with the city as a party or is interested. Shall attend meetings in the city council and shall advise the mayor, the council members and department heads as to all legal questions affecting the city's interest. And this next thing is another housekeeping thing, uh, it has something about the sheriff or, or make sure what about taxable property. And the third thing just says anywhere we got a masculine designation to make those gender neutral. One thing that I didn't point out that was in Mr. Bell's earlier submission, it's um, in section two, it deletes section two, deletes two sentences, it takes out the residence requirement. He had talked about that and we, we had tried to do that three years ago, but it didn't get approved by the council. So that's to take out the residence requirement for the uh, officers that are appointed by the council. We already had it out for the city attorney and I think we had exceptions for a couple of the other positions, so. You still can hire them within, you just don't have to hire them within, because sometimes you won't have anybody that's qualified, perhaps with city limits. This is, this, this is all, almost all of this, we talked about in great length three years ago. And there really wasn't any controversy about it, other than whether we should do it all at that time or just focus on the vice mayor and the vacancy issue. And there was disagreement and we ended up doing nothing. Two other things, the three have, I've spelled out, have been added, but they're, I, I can't imagine that there's anything in that's controversial. Most of it's just trying to comport to what we're doing now, to make our charter match what we're doing. And we did not change the uh, salaries for the mayor and alderman. Mr. Bell said that because mayor expressed my opposition to that, which lead that the way it is, it still will be done in the operating budget each year.
So section three on the salary is just taking out that language where it says beginning in January nineteen ninety-nine.
Yes, and then it just deletes the language that's superfluous at this point. It was, it was transitional language when it was put in there, but it's not necessary now.
Just be, be done as the ordinance, right?
No, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
And the way this is done is, you have to, it has to pass by two-thirds vote, which means it's gotta have four votes for this council. And then the legislature has to incorporate into a bill, Mr. Lambert's office, Senator, Representative Lambert's office and Senator Hale's office will take care of that. They'll get the uh, legislative, legislative people to put this in a, in a bill. Uh, the mayor may not call me for advice on it, using they do, so we can coordinate our efforts to make sure we've got it the way we want it. The legislature will pass it as a private act, then it will come back here and you will have a period of time to adopt it. But once again, it has to be adopted by two-thirds vote. But really there's, I, I don't think there's anything in that's controversial. I talked to the mayor about it briefly today and I've talked to Mr. Bell about it some. And I think we've included all the things that anybody had expressed an interest in. I'm sure there's still some things in the charter that are obsolete and, you know, that can be dealt with later. But these are the ones that were the most glaring, uh, that have to do with the everyday operations of the city. It needs to have a resolution number, if, if, if Travis can give us a resolution number.
And that number is?
Zero two, two zero, two zero dash four.
Put a R in front of that.
Yeah, I move we adopt a resolution, the R O, two two two, two O dash four.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Bento, a second by Councilwoman Carter to uh, accept resolution R zero two, two zero, two zero dash four. Uh, resolution requesting the general assembly to amend the private act charter of the city of Westmoreland, Tennessee. Other discussion? Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for the vote.
Brown.
Yes.
Leaf.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
But reflect, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the logo for the city.
Uh, our logo we have is way out of date. Uh, you have one laying at your table there, it's not in color. Uh, Ms. Tracy Cannon did this for us and I really appreciate it. Uh, one thing we need to move on it, because the, the webmaster is putting the, our web page together. And he said he needed that to build the first page around the colors in that. I, I gave you this one as uh, as the one I had and it's on these pages. Uh, if you wanna look through those, there's two pages, just pull them apart, Michael, fast Doug.
Okay.
Uh, see if there's something on there that you like better, but it, it's kinda imperative that we get it to, we get it passed, so we can uh, hand it off to Shadow.
The one you got down there, is that the color scheme on it?
Yeah, and I think it's, yes, if you wanna see that one, pass that around to Doug. Like I said, I did call the, well, it's all those lines, it's kinda, that one's cleaner, the one that I recommended. That's, that's, as far as the content, it's the same. And she's got some others, it's, you know, she's got a profile in there of a city, don't even look like our city. I think with the W, it's more like the high school than it is the city. So I think we captured the high school and the state of Tennessee on that, of that logo. And I did call the state and they had no problem with us using that uh, state logo. So I move we adopt the logo that I presented to you guys, I think it's four point one or whatever. This one was also presented?
Mm-hmm, that was presented by somebody else.
I'll second his motion.
Which one are we voting for? Do we gotta vote for one of them? This one. You don't know that one, right? That is the one I'm making my motion on, yes.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Councilman Bento, second by Councilman Leaf, uh, to accept uh, the logo that's presented. Um, what all do we need to do is, you know, uh, obviously a person that has done this, is there any kind of copyright or anything like that? We need to be concerned with?
She and I have been working together off and on for about a year on this.
All it was is one, somebody else is in it.
Some cities have something that kinda stands out, but really I couldn't, you, you can put the train on there and you put the old depot. This generation, that's, that, that isn't what that is. So I tried to make it with a modern look, with the state and, and capture the W, that was the idea.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
In addition to, this has nothing to do, I, I lay this at your desk. Uh, if you look on the, some of you've seen it already, but uh, Westmoreland is highlighted on the third page there. Just uh, and Father Sumner has been so good to us. I'm sorry, Sumner. Uh, Ms. Jimmy, Mr. Jimmy Johnson has been so good to help us with Clayton Holmes and Wilson Lumber. We couldn't have done it without him, that's for sure.
Very true, very true. Next item is the appointment of interim chief of police. Also you might go ahead and then include in that or, or make it as part of the motion is to go ahead and start the process for uh, advertising and getting the job description updated from the chief and moving ahead for that also. for, uh, advertising and getting the job description updated from the chief and moving ahead with that also.
Might stay.
I think so. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, appoint an interim chief, um, Detective Flat, uh, as a, uh, as a, um, interim chief effective, um, when Chief Ray, uh, has been, will be stepping down. Uh, that date, I'm still unsure of, but, uh, I'll make that motion. Uh, and I believe you wanted me to tie him, and advertise for, um, for the chief of police at this time.
Is that a dollar an hour raise while he's, is that right?
Uh, it's what we've done in the past for department heads, it's a two hundred dollar per week.
Oh, okay, alright, that's fair.
I don't know if you would call it a per diem or, uh, exactly what the correct term is for it. But in addition to, uh, for accepting the, uh, the extra workload.
So you're okay with that being part of your motion?
I'm okay with that, yes.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to, uh, appoint, uh, Detective Flat as our interim chief of police. Uh, with the, uh, two hundred dollar per week, uh, additional, uh, pay that, that comes with that. I guess, uh, you, you wanna put an effective date on it, is it start Monday or?
Not, not till the chief is gone.
Not till the chief is gone, okay. When, when the chief leaves and, um, of course, uh, I'm sure that they will be working, uh, very hard together to, uh, to do the transition.
But just the point, when the chief actually leaves or when he gets through his vacation? Cause he's gonna be gone the last two weeks, you know, he, he won't be around, but he's on vacation, is my understanding. So we got two weeks for this to, uh, Detective Flat will have to be taken over in two weeks, the rest of it. So just make that clear when it starts.
Chief, what will be your last working day?
Sir, my last, uh, official working day, uh, as a full-time as chief will be the twenty-eighth.
Of February?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'd also add that Chief Ray has expressed his interest to help the city of Westmoreland in any way, uh, continue, um, with the service that he's provided, we're grateful for that. And it's a, it's a bittersweet, that he's leaving us, we understand. But, uh, it's a tough loss.
Are we gonna put a time limit on the applications, uh, in here by a certain time?
Uh, from the time of advertisement, I think we've done thirty days, uh, past that. And then, uh, you go into the, uh, what I call the sorting cycle, and then the interview cycle.
So once it hits the press, thirty days of that.
Right, right. Cause you, you need to give ample time to, for people to respond and, and I, I wouldn't doubt I haven't asked, but I wouldn't doubt we don't already have resumes coming in, so. Soon as, uh, something like that, uh, hits, hits the streets, so a lot of folks start applying for it, so.
I'd like to ask if the chief would be willing to help put together, uh, the job, the requirements for our, uh, applications.
I will, that's my.
Cause you, you know better than what we do, all that's required.
So you've got an old job description, but it probably needs tweaking for the six years you've been here, things have changed.
Other discussion? Ms. Keisha, if you will call for all of them, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Binnel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Uh, Detective Flat, congratulations to you. We, um, appreciate your dedication and Chief Alpha McConnell, we appreciate all that you have done for the city for the past, uh, six years. And, uh, just have done an excellent job of representing us. A very highly respected officer and we appreciate all that, that you and your family have done to, uh, support you and your dedication to this city, so, thank you. So, uh, I just have one more point, that's everything that is on the agenda. Uh, I just wanna, uh, say that, uh, I received the engineering, uh, contract today from GMC, uh, for the sewer plant. Uh, that was passed back when the original, uh, resolutions and all were passed, uh, for the, uh, for the treatment plant. But unfortunately, because of funding and all, uh, war, uh, went out, we've, uh, gotta redo the contract as part of the, the new application of, uh, involving loan funds. So, uh, uh, Keisha has that in her email, I don't know if she's seen it yet or not. Uh, but, uh, she will be getting it out to everyone at their earliest date, let you review it. Um, I just need to know if, uh, you want to hold another special call meeting to vote on that. Or, um, if, if you want me to just go ahead and, and assign it as the mayor and, and move on with it. Especially bands that already been signed one, so. So, uh, I'll let you review it, uh, I didn't wanna try to, to push that much, uh, paperwork, cause I, uh, for some reason, I'm thinking it's several pages long, so it's a lot to take in. And, uh, we'll make sure that Mr. Bradley gets a copy of it and, and, uh, he can review it also. If any, is everything?
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.